As we think about our financial management plan, we also included a more specific presentation on some changes in the fire department as we might move from a separate nonprofit to more toward a city department with a paid-on call staff. And then Chief Kreis provided you with an annual report for the police department. That end report, if not, well, it's in the agenda packet, which is online, but at some point in time, we'll also get that on our website.
Thank you. Public discussion, this is a time for individuals to address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. We will be having public discussion for all items on the agenda that will be voted on this evening. There are two that we won't, and those are the first readings of ordinances where there won't be public discussion because we won't be voting on them this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss any item not on the agenda with the council this evening? If so, please state your name and address, either online or in chambers. If you're in chambers, you can step forward to the podium. Is there any public discussion this evening from anyone on items not on the agenda? So last opportunity for public discussion, if anyone wishes to discuss anything with the council, please state your name and address. We'll close public discussion and move to the consent agenda. This is minutes for the February 21st, 21st, 2023 council meeting and accounts payable. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Council Jelly, second by Council Jones. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LaBach.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Ordinances, first is ordinance 2023-02, an ordinance amending Hermantown quota ordinances by adding a new section 405, sale of tetrahydrocanamidol products. This is the first reading. Next is ordinance 2023-03, an ordinance amending Hermantown quota ordinances, section 270 fee schedule. This is also the first reading. Next are resolutions, resolution 2022-131, resolution accepting an amended proposal from Northland Consulting Engineers for engineering services for design and construct engineering for the sanitary sewer trunk line spur from Oak Ridge Drive to the trunk line under the city engineer's contract with the city. Do we have motion or an amended motion? Well, after much discussion, I would like to amend the motion to extend the water and sewer as we've discussed, and look at the need for additional right-of-way if needed. So extend the water and sewer and not, not build Orkstrom Road all the way through as once proposed, but to rather create a dead end with a hammerhead. The road design would be an urban design with sidewalk, and the hammerhead would be running about approximately in the triangular shaped piece of property that the city already currently owns.
Second.
What was the second? Okay, motion by Counsel Geisler, second by Counsel Jelly. Mr. Mulder, do you have anything?
Sure, and just to get a, give some history on this, back in August of 2022, we looked, initially looked at extending this sewer from the end of Oak Ridge and where it would connect with Peyton Acres down directly to the east, down to the trunk line in section 24. As we began that process, we became aware that the residents along Orkstrom Road north of Anderson Road were interested in sanitary sewer. And so we then shifted to try to connect that lift station and that general area and go south to the trunk line in Anderson Road. So that was kind of the change of why you have an amendment proposal. And at that time, we said, well, if you're going to build water and sewer, then you should really cover it up with a road. It was our recommendation because at some point in time, we're going to want to see internal development in section 24, you need to build some kind of roads in there. Based upon the discussions with the council, we're now looking at simply building the road to that triangle piece. And at some point in time, the road may go further depending upon what kind of development, if and when that happens.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council?
I'm curious if we can split the road and the city and sewer. I don't, I mean, I think the sewer and the water is necessary, I think, to grow. There's a lot of opportunity to put that city, the water and the sewer through there. I just don't see the need for the sidewalk. You know, there's not sidewalk on Anderson Road, so where are people walking from to begin with? I just don't know if it's money well spent for us to do that. I know there was talk about erosion control. Is there erosion on that street as it is?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I mean, if it's not, if we can put the street back exactly the way it is and put water and sewer there, I think that's the best course of action for us. I mean, you still could put a turnaround there, but if we're going to put the trail through there, it seems like we could do that at that time.
The city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion right now does include the road with the curb and gutter. And that's the motion we either have to approve or vote down. If it's voted down, another motion could come forward in a different form. But right now, the motion, the motion on the table doesn't allow anything other than what's in the motion.
We're talking, what amendment, can we amend it to take the sidewalk out?
Well, we did amend the motion now. So what's on the table is what we have to either say yes or no to. The only way we could change what's on the table right now is to say no, and then come up with a new motion. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
I deferred it to the council president. Yes, you're doing.
We have the motion. If we have, right now, we're at a point where we have to say yes or no. And if we say no.
Yeah.
The people that prevail can bring it forward with a new.
Is there a way we could have had this discussion before we brought the motion up to put the sidewalk?
Ran out of time.
At least a pre-agenda, you ran out of time.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't put in a roll or, you know, blacktop or whatever, we have to find that funding source somewhere else down the road if they want to put that in? Because right now, that's where we're getting funding because we're putting in a sewer.
Whatever road we put in is funded now. There will be allowances if no road, if no blacktop was put in, there's still allowances for gravel and cover.
And to be clear, if there is further development in that area that we're theoretically accessing with this road down the line, there will already be blacktop access from Oak Ridge Drive.
I think the, the original intent was is if another developer, if a developer that owns that property further comes in, they would extend what we're doing now or come in from Oak Ridge. They would find their own path, but.
So we're, the city's paying for 300 feet of blacktop and road that wouldn't be needed because we can already access it off of Oak Ridge Drive.
Well, we have, we, the road needs to be there to service the homes that are there now.
Well, I mean, yeah, but we, you know, they already have a road, right? Are we spending money that needs to be spent by blacktopping that road?
I'm just, personally, I'm in favor of putting, you know, we're only putting in a short distance of road, but I am in favor of putting in the best quality product that we can put in. And it is similar to other areas of the community where there are developments. I think that the curb and gutter and sidewalk or blacktop and gravel shoulder are the two ways to go, but the curb and gutter does, you've got a short dead end road. It just does make it look nice.
Yeah.
It is a higher quality product than just gravel or gravel and.
Yeah, so.
Blacktop and shoulder.
Right-of-way goes from 66 feet down to 40 something for just blacktop road versus blacktop with curb and gutter.
All roads are 66.
66. So what's the width, right? Like what, how much are we encroaching on these people's yards and their property with the sidewalk versus without a sidewalk?
It would all be within the right-of-way.
All be within the 60. David, what's the blacktop width that we have required on roads?
So, okay, Mayor and Council, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of discussion and like to try to fill in some blanks, maybe answer some questions as, as we go along here. So one thing I want to clarify is the city of Hermantown has three road standards right now, and I'm going to list them in hierarchy of, you know, that maybe the, the most cost to the least cost. So what we call urban section, that's 28 feet wide, curb, gutter, sidewalk on one side with storm sewer. The, the second section we have is a rural batuminous section, which is 28 feet wide. That's 24 feet of batuminous and two-foot gravel shoulders on both sides. That's what we built Leveque Junction with a couple of years ago, and it has ditches on both sides. The third typical section we have is a rural section that is a gravel or class five section. And it's the, the identical to the batuminous section with the exception, there's no blacktop. It's still 28 feet wide, and it's, but it's gravel and has ditches. So my recommendation as city engineer is we apply one of those roadway standards to the road that we were going to construct.
My motion was for urban.
Correct. And so, um, one of the questions I heard was why, why should we build a sidewalk? So I'd kind of like to maybe take a stab at answering that. One is the adjacent development Peyton Acres. The road section they are building is an urban section with curb, gutter and sidewalk. In our road improvement plan, we were planning to redo Oak Ridge Drive, which that's a rural batuminous section, and we plan to reconstruct that to a urban section with curb, gutter and sidewalk. So by implementing the sidewalk here, you'd be connecting a network of sidewalks. Then you get up the Stebner Road, you know, Maple Grove, you can get to the, a big part of the city from that piece. The other thing I'm, I'm hearing is, okay, we're, we want to, the, the resolution, the amended resolution is to include the, the water and sewer. So when I originally studied this, I kind of laid out four options in the feasibility study, two of which went to the trunk line that we built in, you know, 2018, 19, and two of them were to come down Orkstrom Road. So the two options coming down Orkstrom are going to the north around Mr. Provet's property and then coming back through Northwoods and straight down the, the section line where Orkstrom. The second option was coming down the property line between Lund and Provet's. That is a lot shorter option, and if we're not building the road, that, we should have some consideration for that alignment. It's, you know, it's, it's hundreds of feet shorter and thousands, tens of thousands of dollars cheaper. Also, I'm, as a city engineer and looking at this for many years and different studies, it's, it's my strong opinion and recommendation that this road does go up to the Northwoods parcel and connect to Peyton Acres. And the reason being is this is one of the key access points to opening the development opportunities for section 24. So with that, I'll, I'll let your discussion continue, and if you have any other questions, let me, I'm happy to answer them.
In your opinion, I guess, what's, what's the benefit of accessing section 24 off of Orkstrom Road versus accessing off the Oak Ridge Drive?
Well, we're, part of it is it's, it's a shorter distance from, if you're commuting from Anderson Road up to Maple Grove. It's a shorter commute rather than going through Bishop Woods or Peyton Acres. The second probably most compelling reason, in my opinion, is the elimination of a dead end. It provides better police and fire protection. And Chief Kreis has routinely said that the, the dead end developments rarely get patrolled because it's, it's not convenient for them to, you know, drive through it and, and turn around and come back. So those, those are the, the reasons I would, I would state as to why I'm recommending that be connected. And I guess the, the other reason too is we have, we have one opportunity here to, to use sales tax dollars to, to make this happen. Otherwise, if this were to happen in the future, high probability that there would be, you know, an assessment against the adjacent properties.
My thought is that with the highest quality of roads with the curb and the gutter, if something else happens in the future, we've already gotten that part done. And if something went further from this in the future, it would be in that quality because of where it is and the type of roads we want to build in that area. And this part would at least already be done and paid for without assessments for the people that live there. But we would be stopping it at a hammerhead.
I guess if, if we, if we really do think that there's going to be future development down there, I mean, how come we're having the conversation about dead ending it there as opposed to pushing the pavement through to Oak Ridge Drive? I mean, I feel like we're just pushing that, pushing that decision down the line to appease some people.
There's more of a what if on that portion. There's a, there are people that own that property that haven't got any concrete plans for development right now. And the idea of extending it all the way to Oak Ridge and connecting it with Peyton Acres was give them an opportunity to make plans for their further development. If that part fits in, let's let them bear the financial cost of that in the future. But we've already borne it in our parts that we're obligated to build and maintain. Those are just my thoughts on it.
Mayor and Council, I'd also like to add that any scenario that we're discussing tonight, there, there will be easements and or right-of-way that we'll have to acquire, whether it's for road or utilities.
David, I had a question follow-up. You had talked about the two scenarios, the one we approved before, running the, just not even bothering with Orkstrom Road, just running it right down to the trunk. And you said that's a shorter distance than going down Orkstrom?
No.
Oakstrom's shorter.
Correct.
Okay, so we are saving length of pipe and then also allowing those residents who don't have sewer the ability to pick up sewer.
Correct.
Okay. So to me, it still makes sense to run it down that way. I mean, we have people there that need septic systems replacement or sewer lines.
Yes, I, I'll just make my position clear. I think it should look like Leveque Junction roads up to that triangle. I think makes the most sense. Because I mean, we, we want to draw comparisons to the developments with gutter and sidewalk. Well, we talked about Anderson or Stebner Road having gutter and sidewalk. We talked about Oak Ridge Drive and Peyton Acres having gutter and sidewalk. This road, you know, with what we have on the table here, doesn't, doesn't connect to either of those, any of that.
But I think we would also be looking at gutter and sidewalk if and when we redo Anderson. We would want Anderson to look probably more like Uggstead does between Arrowhead and Maple Grove than it does now.
Well, and we have a potential for it. We talked about at the HITA meeting, you know, the Deanwall site, some other development that could include possible sidewalks, Hermantown Road, it'd be nice to get them down Anderson Road. It would be nice to connect, if we could, from Haynes to Orkstrom to pick up that development. Again, that's, there's a lot of what ifs, but it would be nice to have that. And that's my mind is that if we're going to do it, we should do it with the curb, gutter and sidewalk. And the other thing too, as far as erosion, there's probably not much erosion now because it's gravel versus you put in the paved road. I think it'll be better, easier to control the water with curb, gutter and sidewalk than, than just ditches. And I got ditches and I have to mow a wet dish every other week, so. So I would, I would propose, I mean, you know, I, we, everybody can vote however they want, but my, I would like to, my motion is, stands, yeah, perfect.
Kind of with John, I agree with stopping it. And I agree, if we're going to do the road, might as well do the urban standard that we're leaning on. I do get your point where it doesn't make sense right now, but eventually it will, and then we'd have to go back and potentially redo it anyway, so. My stance.
Everybody, better do things said, but if we do, then we'll open up the public discussion. Any members of the public that wish to comment or talk to council about this can approach the podium. If you're in the chambers, if you're online, you can simply start with your name and address. Is there any public discussion? If, if there is public discussion in chambers, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. My name's Dave Miller, 4793 Anderson Road. And just a point of clarification, the hammerhead that you're talking about, where would that be in relation to the, to the Orkstrom Road? Originally, the talk was running it on up north of the, the line where the, where the existing pump station is, but it sounds like it's going to be short of that now.
We, we could point it out to you on a map. It's harder to describe.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Geisler has a.
It's about half of what it would have been.
It's, there's my scribbled map.
I'm working on calling it up.
There's a, there's the triangular shape of the property.
Yeah, okay, that's the one that I was thinking of.
It's kind of across from Mr. Sunquist Pond there.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wicklund is trying to pull it up to put it on the monitors.
You got to call me to do it. They need to talk to you, not.
Right. Folks, we, we have, if you need to discuss something, it's with the council at this time. Okay, that is the map. That triangular section that you see, city of Hermantown, is where we were proposing that the turnaround be made, the hammerhead go into, so that there wouldn't be right-of-way needed for the hammerhead since the city already owns it. There may be some right-of-way needed for sewer north of that spot. We'll give everyone a few moments to digest that. And then we'll ask if there's any other comments, questions or concerns. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak to the council, please approach the podium. If anyone is online, please start with your name and address. Okay, one more opportunity for public comment.
Hi.
Hi, name and address.
Robin Johnson, 3909 Orkstrom Road. And I was just wondering, is that going to be blacktop, that triangle, that turnaround? Will it be like a parking lot behind our garage?
I believe it would be like a, an L.
Okay. Personally, if it's going to go through, I would rather it just go straight up. I don't like the idea of a turnaround right there behind our house. I kind of came on board knowing that, thinking that we're going to do the road to the end of, up to that property line. And I like that idea. I mean, I, it took a while to get to that point, but understanding that city sales tax is here and available. Yeah, I'm just thinking people parking there and going for walks, I could see that happening. Could become a parking lot. I would rather see it just go and stop further. We are, we want the sewer. We were the first people to ask about the sewer, so we're the ones that started. But I've been there 38 years. We had to put in our own water line, if we could get help with the sewer line with the road. And I know it's hard for a lot of people, and I'm sorry, it's hard for us too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public discussion? If there's no other public discussion, we'll close that period. With no other comments from council, I'd ask Mr. Muller.
Just one comment. Please understand what you're doing here is approving the engineering contract for the design of this work. The final plans and specifications will come back to you for approval at a later point in time. And then we'll ask you to approve those plans and authorize advertisement. But if you approve that, then we will get bids on that and award the contract.
Can I, one clarification, we can adjust those plans at a later date. We're just approving.
At this point, you're approving the contract. You have to approve the plans on a later date.
Okay.
I have one more question. On, to bring up Mrs. Johnson's point there about parking on, on that turnaround. And Chief Kreis is not here, I guess, but John, do you know of any issues of any other similar dead end turnarounds or that will kind of issue with people parking?
I think. You're stretching my, you're stretching my recollection. I do not recall in 14 years here where I've had, where I've heard people say, oh, there's, for instance, there's a, here's, here's the example, on Dana Road, south of Morris Thomas, we extended that road several years ago, and there is a hammerhead there. I have never heard of complaint or of parking or activity there. I, I've never heard that. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I've never heard that.
Yeah, okay. And it's close to a trail there, conceivably.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it dead, it dead ends on the park. There is probably an informal trail from that hammerhead down into the park. But I, like I say, I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but we've, I don't, I've never heard of a complaint there.
I, also, if we have a hammerhead, and we have any kind of problems of parking on the hammerhead and the right-of-way, we can make that a no parking zone and have it closed. And there can be enforcement actions.
Mayor and council, if I could add, so the other thing, I'm not sure if the council and the, and the residents are aware of, on just west of that triangle parcel is a stormwater pond that treats stormwater from Oak Ridge Drive. So that hammerhead is going to serve as an access for us to access and clean out that stormwater pond. So it would be my recommendation that we for sure no park that. And there may likely be a gate at the end of that turnaround, so nobody drives down to the pond.
Um, that's something that you could put in your engineering.
Yes. And the other thing I would add or slash offer is if you, if you approve this resolution this evening, I would recommend that we have another public meeting. meeting with at least with the the residents, so we know what we're designing. I don't wanna bring the plans to a ninety percent and then say, no, this doesn't work, that I, I need direction as to where the sewer and water is gonna go. Is it gonna go down the property line? Or is between Privet and Lund, or is it gonna go up around into Northwoods parcel? That's that's the direction that I'm looking for.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? We have a little call.
Hi, sir.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Blah.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty two. Resolution receiving bids and awarding contract for street removal improvement number five forty three. Lindahl Road Bridge Removal in the amount of seventy six thousand dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, second by Counselor Geisler.
Mr. Mulder.
So this is a, a word in the bed for that bridge removal. As you recall, last meeting, we approved the easements for the hammerheads on the two dead ends that will be created. The ru- the bridge has been closed for a couple of years. There's been no concern from residents about that issue, so this will, soon as the weather permits, we'll have that bridge removed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Awfully close bids.
Yeah, I saw that.
And we're creating a couple of hammerheads here. With no parking sign.
There'll be an experiment to see if people park down there.
Well, anybody that wants to fish in that creek. Any other comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty two? If someone is in chambers, please step forward and state your name and address. If you're online, simply state your name and address. Any public input on the resolution for road removal on Lindahl Road Bridge? Last opportunity for public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty two. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Geisler.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty three. Resolution approving final plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for street improvement project numbers five thirty eight. Richard Avenue, Lindgren Road, Stevie Drive, and a frontage road and Sam's Way. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jones, second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder.
So this is a street improvement project that we've been working on. We originally planned on doing this in twenty two. But it just took a little longer than we had hoped, but we're now ready to proceed in twenty twenty three. We have a local road improvement grant for this that will fund it in part. The rest of it will be funded by various funds and some assessments of the businesses in that area. But this will basically redo all of the streets in between Haynes and Lowberg and north of Maple Grove up to Market Street. So all of the, what we kinda call now the Herman Town Marketplace, will have new streets in in that area.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have to say my standard item, and I probably should have up above, except for above, it was an amended proposal, and I think I already sent it on the main proposal, but as far as item twenty three, my son works for Northern Consulting Engineers, and the result of this contract has no financial benefit for he or I.
Thank you. And Mr. Mulder, this also will build some new roadway. It would allow access to commercial property closer to Sam's than is currently developed.
This will we currently have Lindgren Road there, but we will also build, we will extend Richard to Lindgren. So we will, we will build in a new road on Richard to connect Lindgren, and Richard will connect then Lindgren over to Maple Grove.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Or any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty three? Last opportunity for public input on this road improvement resolution. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Geisler.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Blah.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty four. Resolution approving preliminary and final plat of Stebner Woods and imposing conditions on the final plat. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have?
Second.
Second. By Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder.
We'll let Eric Johnson present this.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the eight acre property that's on the east side of forty nine thirty eight Herman Town Road, which is Bethany Cemetery. For your recall, back in October, this eight acres of land was subdivided and rezoned from P public to R three for the purpose of Bethany Cemetery to market that for potential residential development. Since then, the applicant Titan Premier LLC, Kevin Kuklis, who is in the audience this evening, has since purchased the property and is proposing an eight lot subdivision that meets the R three requirements. Each one of these lots is greater than a half acre in size, and they also have a greater than one hundred feet of lot frontage. So there is water and sanitary sewer available on Stebner Road. The applicant would be working then with the city engineer and public works director on the best way to provide connections through that roadway. There's no infrastructure, new infrastructure being proposed, other than these individual connections for each home.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I have a question. We're not talking about putting any new roads, right? They're connecting to existing stuff. Yep. The lots meet our standards currently?
That is correct. They meet the R three standards.
I guess I'm wondering why this needs to be voted on by us. I mean, they're, they're just subdividing a piece of property, right?
Because the city council has to approve all plats.
All plat, okay. So if somebody owned a five acre trunk of property, wanted to split it into two, two and a half acres, we would have to vote on that.
Well, that's not, that, that, that's a subdivision as opposed to a, this is a plat. So there, there, there's a distinction. There are some instances where a subdivision of property could be done administratively, but when we do a plat, it comes to the city council.
Okay, just some
Yep.
Provisions.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I have two comments. This plat gets registered with the county then, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And then my only other comment was, I think it's a great use. I don't think that the cemetery people think, probably didn't think of it so quick. I'm glad. And I'm hopeful that this will create some affordable, in quotes, lots for people, since, you know, roads are there, utilities are there. I'm hoping that this will create some, you know, some possible opportunities for people who might not be able to afford a lot in a brand new development, so I think it's gonna be a good for the community.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty four? Any public input on the final plat of Stebner Woods? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Blah.
Hi.
Jones. Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty five. Resolution approving an extension of the final planned unit development plan for Ingwall's redevelopment. Do we have a motion? Motion from Counselor Jones, second.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson?
Sure.
Address this, Eric.
Great, thank you again. This is originally back in November of twenty twenty, a twenty six lot P U D preliminary and final had been approved by the city council. Since that time, this has been extended in the past, and the applicant is looking to extend it for one more additional time period here. This new extension would run through March of twenty twenty four, and this gives the applicant a little bit of additional time to speak to potential builders of the property for lots as well as infrastructure.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
How many, how many building sites are in there? I guess, two part question. How many acres is it? How many building sites are in there? Do we know that?
I mean, I believe it's plus or minus about eight point five acres, and there's twenty six lots that have been approved for that. It came under a planned unit development at that time, essentially small lot residential. This is on the northern portion of the Ingwall's property that abuts Anderson Road.
So we're talking about the potential to build twenty plus homes versus roughly sixteen, right, half acre sizes?
That, that is correct.
Any other comments or questions?
Does the setback from the road change, or does it still to meet that?
Under a planned unit development, basically all lot sizes, lot dimensions, setbacks, et cetera, are individual per each planned unit development. So in this case, since they are smaller lots, that yes, there are custom essentially setbacks associated with this development that are different than a standard R three.
This was already approved in twenty twenty. We're just extending.
Anything else? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty five? Is there any public input on the extension of the planned unit development plan for Ingwall's redevelopment? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Blah.
Hey.
Jones.
Hi.
Geisler.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty six. Resolution approving a special use permit for construction of a two family home in an R three residential zoning district. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve?
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones, Mr. Mulder, do we want Eric to analyze?
Let's give Eric one more turn.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I'll go for the trifecta. Thank you. This was originally here in September of twenty twenty two. The application was by Sumas Construction, Inc. That was approved at that time. It took the Sumas group a number of months to finally close on this property, and when they did, they inadvertently put it under the title of the owner's name rather than the company's name. In this case, it's Jesse, Jesse and Amanda Sumas, as opposed to Sumas Construction. So what this essentially is doing is cleaning up the special use permit to reflect the Sumases as the applicants and owners rather than Sumas Construction. And in that case, we can file the paperwork with St. Louis County.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to be clear, that this is a situation where it's like, because it was two different names, the county won't record it.
Any questions from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty six? Is there any public input on the resolution in front of the council at this time? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Geisler.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty seven. Resolution approving utility and infrastructure director job description and position. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder.
So this is, position is a long time in coming. We've been looking at this for over a year and a half. Proposed as a utility and infrastructure director that would do a lot of the administrative work relative to the road improvement plan, the stormwater utility, and then just kind of planning for some long term improvements for water and sewer as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I had a couple. The, this person will probably need to drive some, or would we, they just get paid mileage for their incidental driving?
Yeah, we pay them mileage.
Okay. And then how would you plan to advertise the position?
So we'll advertise in the New Tribune, the Ligament sort of cities. We'll use Indeed, and we also will probably reach out to like University of Minnesota, the engineering program.
Thanks.
Counselor Jelly, you have a question?
Yeah, how come it wasn't filled before? Just didn't have the right candidates, or?
At the time, we were down to about two or three candidates. And we just thought, it's like, well, let's take a second look at this. Is this the right position? Is this the right mix of things, just in terms of how it coordinates between public works, the engineer, community development? And then, so that's why we also had Baker Tilly do kind of an organizational review to say, it's like, what's the right mix of positions here? And they recommended that we fill the, go ahead and fill it. So we're gonna make another run of this.
And it's you that makes the final decision on the candidate?
Typically, on the directors, we'll bring back a recommendation to the city council for formal approval.
And in the past, it's the compensation and the job description and the expectations didn't produce a large pool of desirable candidates.
Part of, part of this issue, part of that whole issue is, is just the change in the employment sector from, you know, twenty twenty one till now. You've seen inflation, you've seen the quiet quitting by people, people leaving the workforce. And so it's like, the recruitment pool is down for almost every position across the, you know, that, that the city is hiring. So again, it'll be interesting to see what we have here. I think we can get I, I'm confident we can get a good candidate that can grow into this position. I mean, I don't think we're gonna get somebody who's got, you know, ten years of experience, but I do think we can find somebody who's got the necessary technical skills that can grow into this position.
Do you think the pay is competitive? It's hard to say with this kind of a
Hard, it's hard to say a little bit with this position. It's, it is comparable to all of our other department heads, our public works director and our community development director. The way we have our, our pay system set up is that they're in the same grade, but this will start at a step one versus, you know, if you've been here five years, you'll be making more, but it's at least in the same grade.
Any other question? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty seven? Any public comment on the resolution for the job description for utility, infrastructure director? Or utility and infrastructure director? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Geisler.
Hi.
Jelly.
Hi.
Blah.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash twenty eight. Resolution authorizing the Director of Finance and Administration to amend selected twenty twenty two budgets and make transfers. Do we have a motion? Come on.
Motion.
Motion by Counselor Jones.
Second.
Second. I'm hoping Counselor Jones read through the
My voice isn't
Mr. Mulder?
Mr. Arm can explain these better than I. Or maybe he can. We'll give him a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Periodically, we bring before you budgeted transfers or amendments and transfers between funds. Usually once, sometimes twice a year. And so this before you tonight is for twenty twenty two, like the resolution says to amend certain line item budget items and to transfers as well. Any questions, feel free to, uh, to ask.
Any questions or comments from council? During that, we'll open it up for public discussion. Is there any public discussion on this resolution? Any public discussion on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-eight? Any public comments or discussion on the resolution to allow budget transfers? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Hi.
Jelly?
Hi.
La Bla?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mayor Boucher?
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine, resolution awarding contract for John Deere ten twenty-five R subcompact utility tractor with implements for twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars and twenty cents, which includes applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Counselor Jelly, do we have a second?
I'll second.
The second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder.
This is for a utility tractor for kind of the, um, this building and this, um, uh, land here. Um, it'll replace the, uh, more that we've had for a number of years. It'll also allow for, um, putting a brush on and a snow blower, so we can use it during the winter as well. It's similar, if you've seen it, uh, to the, um, utility tractor that the Wellness Center uses.
And it stays here?
It'll be here, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine? Is there any public input on this resolution? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution to purchase a subcompact utility tractor and implements. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Hi.
La Bla?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Geisler?
Hi.
Mayor Boucher?
Hi. Motion passes. Next is a motion to move to closed session, after which we will move back to open session to adjourn.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jones, second by Counselor LeBlanc, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.